So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Logan's going to give me a thumbs up, okay. So, welcome to our Tuesday, May 3rd. May 3rd, oh my gosh, we're in May.
Yes.
So it is the Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is an ISD 709 Duluth School Board. We always meet the first Tuesday of the month. And the purpose of our Committee of the Whole Meeting is to really hear presentations from our programs and from our staff that work for us. And so it just enriches the board, gives our community an opportunity to also hear the programming and the options and the excellence going on in our district. So we welcome our community that's watching us over our YouTube channel. And we just welcome you to the Committee of the Whole Meeting tonight at the United Healthcare Facility. I'm going to turn it over to Chair of the Finance Business Member Eater for a roll call.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lachlan Kemp.
Here.
Member Lowfald.
Here.
Member Oswald.
Arriving late.
Arriving late. Member Sadowski.
Here.
Member Santone.
Excuse.
Excused, okay. Assistant Superintendent Magus.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Here.
Deputy Clerk Kathy Erickson, she's excused for this one, right? Okay. And then HR Director Severus, she's excused as well.
She is excused.
Yep, okay. And then Board Secretary.
Caitlin Carroll.
And she's here.
Here.
Yep, okay. And then Board Secretary Paquette, she's excused.
She's excused.
And then the two school board reps are excused. All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's our roll call. And just, we're, have the opportunity to have Member Lachlan Kemp attend via our ability to Zoom her in. Member Lachlan Kemp is attending to some family business out of town. So we enjoy that opportunity because there's a lot of board business. And oftentimes, our personal work and family and work life collide with also board work. So we're, we're really glad that we have a option for that. So, thanks. Thanks, Member Lachlan Kemp. So I'm going to turn it over. Committee of the Whole is run by Assistant Superintendent Bonds. So Assistant Superintendent, what do you got for us tonight?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. We have a packed agenda with three items.
Okay.
But there's a really, really important item. So we're going to begin with our first agenda item. Our Coordinator for Early Childhood and Head Start, Mrs. Sher Williams, will be providing a presentation related to adult Duluth Public Schools Head Start Program FY 2022, Cost of Living Adjustment, and Quality Improvement. So if I turn to record here, Williams.
Great, great, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
I appreciate your introduction there about what the role of Committee of the Whole was.
Okay.
Perhaps I'll come sometime when it's not just grant or personal time.
Good idea, good idea.
Yes. So I've got a couple of grants that I do need to have approved. One is the Cost of Living Adjustment. And you can see the dollar bonus $57,000. That's $57,800. And a Quality Improvement Grant, both from the federal Head Start Program. These come to us fairly regularly. The last time we had a Quality Improvement Grant was a couple of years ago. I think the expectation was that it would be more than what it came as it unfolded through the system. Both of these will be used to cover increased salaries and cost of living. So no fund initiatives, which can sometimes come with the Quality Improvement funding as abroad's open potential. But we are alleging for a 6% wage benefit increase. So both of these will go towards increased spending. So again.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Two leaders here. So we're delighted to have you come and, and share with us. I mean, we'd love to hear other great things going on in our early childhood. But getting grants and knowing that you have the skillset and the ability to apply for them is wonderful. And, and I too, you know, the, the two grants going through, going for salary and the increases in the cost of living is just a celebration as well. We're so glad that you can have that opportunity and that the grants can be used in those ways as well. Because you've come to us before, before us many times in the last four years I've been here with grants that are substantially wonderful for just different products and different activities we're going to do. But it is important to pay staff and to maintain the quality that we have in your program. So that's just my two cents worth. Anybody else?
Everyone. Where did the grant come from? It doesn't say.
It is a federal Head Start from the Office of Head Start.
I just want to say thanks as well. Really appreciate your leadership within the program. We've talked about that a number of times. And also knowing that it involves a number of teachers. And this week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Just wanted to show appreciation for all the teachers in the group as well as teachers involved in the events that we talked about tonight.
You already, you already know I really appreciate everything you do. We already know that everything begins early with our students. So the work you do and you and your team do is so critically important to starting our kids off on a good start on their education and their future. So the work you're doing is really important. And it really provides a foundation for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rosie, Member Lachlan Kemp, I just don't, if you want to put your hand up when you need to say something, otherwise you're not in my kind of, you know, view too. But do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, as always, thank you, Sheri, for all the work you and your staff do. Just on a side note, just because I know May in the past before COVID always meant some kind of end of the year celebration with your families. Is that happening this year?
This year, instead of having one large event, we will do a parent retreat at Camp Miller, specifically for parents. And we'll have site-based celebrations at each one of the schools that we're located in.
Excellent.
Right. You should, I should, I do have one more thing that's not on the agenda that you should know about.
Okay.
We are in the midst of a research project with Antioch University in New England. With David Sobel. And for, David Sobel is an internationally renowned author of environmental education and place-based education materials. And so we have been engaged in research with him, a preschool-backed out-of-the-research project. And UMD, who is facilitating the research, invited us to be a part of it. So it's looking at the impacts of nature-based programming. Ooh, he's a little nervous there. The impacts of nature-based programming on children's executive function skills. So he is coming to town from New England on Friday to be at our staff meeting to help us debrief the research.
Okay.
And will also be presenting at UMD the next day with the Minnesota Nature-Based Educators Group. So, so pretty exciting stuff. He really is, in my master's thesis, which I wrote in 1995, he was my most promoted researcher. So I am thrilled to be standing beside him and introducing him to our staff with the research that we do. And so it's pretty exciting.
And is this kind of an extension from the playscapes that we, you had grant money and you built at the three schools? And we watch that now over the year?
Uh huh. Yeah. And we've done other research projects with UMD. UMD actually has been doing a lot of great research in the field of early childhood environmental education. And so we are very excited to be on their list of willing participants in their research studies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would that be something we'd want to tell our Communication Officer, Adele Willens, to kind of come?
Yeah.
You already do?
She'll, she'll be joining us for the meeting, so.
Okay. Good job. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming.
Our next presentation is going to be provided by Mrs. Angie Frank, who is our Coordinator of Adult Education. And refresh my memory, I know Angie has been in attendance in our meetings a couple of times, but I'm not sure if she's been formally introduced to the board as the Coordinator of Adult Education. Did I do that already?
I was formally introduced last month. And I said, I'll come back.
That's what makes you welcome again. And I know you have a presentation.
Yeah. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to come in and share some more information about our program. You know, I'm fairly new to this position, but I have been working in adult ed for about 13 years. And historically, I think it's maybe behooves me to share with you that I think many people didn't know we existed. And so I want to make sure the board and the community know we exist and know what we do. And just to give a little historical context as to why I think that's the case, we were located in Old Central, right next door to ALC, that serves high school students. And when we were there, we were called the Adult Learning Center, also ALC. And so many people assumed that we were all one program. But we are a very different program. We don't serve students in K-12 at all. We serve adults. And in your little board books, I gave you just a brief overview of the programs that we do offer. And basically, if an adult in our community has an educational goal or a career goal, we have programs that can support them. And in my recent time in this position, I've been pondering, so what, what is our role in the Duluth Public Schools? And when I think about that, I think about, you know, our data shows students who receive free and reduced lunch have lower graduation rates. And I think that our role to support the goals of the K-12 students are to support their parents. And if we can help parents achieve their educational goals, their career goals, their kids are going to do better. You know, I think when, when parents do better, kids do better. And so I'm really thinking about that in, in a way that we can serve and provide something to the district to help the district get their K-12 students where they want them to be. And so what do we do? We've got, we've got six programs. I'll just give you a quick overview and then I'm happy to just answer any questions you have. We have our GED, Adult Diploma Program. That's what most people think of us. Right now, we, actually, students earn a diploma from Duluth Public Schools if they're 21 or older. If they're younger than 21, then they'll, they'll work with ALC to meet that goal. So that's one area. Second area we have is a Basic Skills Program. And that's really tailored to students who want to bring up their reading or math skills to help with basic living. Usually those students are sitting at below a sixth grade level. They may or may not have a high school equivalency, but they're just finding life would be easier if they had some way to build up those basic reading and math skills. Then we also have our English Language Learners. I don't know if I'm doing in order here.
That's okay.
Kind of out of order.
Correct.
We've got our English Language Learners. So anybody who has a goal to learn English, you can come work with our teacher to learn how to speak, how to write. And also, we have a citizenship test preparation available as well if people need to go that route. This is so cool. So our program, our, our college prep program, we have a teacher at Lake Superior College, where students can take math, reading, writing classes at Lake Superior for free on the college campus, using their platforms. And it's really a great opportunity to transition people into college, to make sure you're ready before you pay tuition. It's, it's just a really exciting program, I think, that we, we can offer that service to people. And then we also have our Career Path Program, which partners with several organizations. We partner with Lake Superior College, Career Force of the City of Duluth, SOAR, and Community Action Duluth are some of our usual partners. And those are a lot of times grant-based. And usually, adult ed is working to teach contextualized math, writing, reading skills necessary for whatever career path they're hoping to go down. And then our partners pick up with some specific training in whatever area the, the grant is covering. And so currently, we're doing like a construction trades class, a CNA class. We have a peer professional track that people can take. And just a great opportunity for people to get a better job on a better career path. The sixth thing up there is our Computer Skills. And that's a program that's kind of in development. There's really a strong need for digital literacy opportunities. And so we're trying to meet that need in the community and, and working to build that program. But then there's a program that's not on there, and that's our Corrections Program. And so we offer classes in the St. Louis County Jail. It was a very robust program before the pandemic. And now it's just kind of coming back to fruition as it was sort of unpaused through the pandemic. So, there's a lot we do. And I'm, I'm happy to kind of give any more information or tease out anything that wasn't clear. Yeah.
Oh, I just want to say, first of all, thank you for being here and sharing all of this. I knew a lot about what you did, but I didn't know everything that you did. And I have to say, is the, is the college, we're caring for colleges, they're called Pathways?
Yep.
So it's just a phenomenal program. And so I wanted to thank you for sharing it with everybody. I myself know many young people who have done the Pathways Program. And it's just a great way for youth to build up their reading and math skills so they're successful at college. You know, I was always really hesitant to encourage someone to enroll in college if they weren't quite ready because I wanted to protect them from that college debt. So it's just a really great service to our community and to just people living in our community to be able to access that. And to have it at LSC is just great too, because it gives people an opportunity to, to know what that's like. Okay, I'm going to get up, I'm going to go to college, I'm going to ride the bus up there, understand how it all works. They get to connect with staff at LSC. So I just wanted to kind of comment on that. And I may have some other thoughts, I'll let someone else go. But thank you.
Thanks for recognizing that.
Member Oswald, are?
Yeah. I heard you talk about the CNA program and the construction program. Are there any other programs that you're looking to start or start developing that the community can use or if you're going to identify any other programs?
Yeah, I am not an expert in that area, which is why we partner with the Workforce Development Board. And so they identify areas of need in industry specific to Duluth. And so construction, healthcare, and manufacturing, I think, are, are what's slated to be on the plate for the next two years. That'll be reassessed and reevaluated and, and will kind of change and grow with, with the needs.
Member Lachlan Kemp?
Angie, thank you for being with us. I, I really appreciated the open house a couple of weeks ago and you making sure that we all were invited to it. I, I, I love your programming. I, I was familiar with the citizenship piece because I've been involved with the naturalization ceremonies that are held at the federal courthouse here in Duluth. So just thank you again. How many staff do you have at? Yeah.
We've got seven teachers and two clerical.
Great, thank you.
Superintendent Magus, sure. No, I really enjoyed the open house as well. And we had a lot, you know, fair amount in common. I, I used to be an English Language Learner teacher and taught adult GD classes and such. Just really was impressed with meeting your staff, meeting your students. And then I was again impressed when somebody shared with me, there, there's a article last week in the New Yorker magazine on a couple of students that, that have been through your English Language Learner programming. And so I think that, that having national recognition, I'm sure it wasn't just about your program, but your program was part of, part of the reason why those, those impressive individuals are here. And so I just want to say thanks for helping make Duluth the better place.
You know, what I'll say about that is, it is, if I can say something. But this is something that I just am very moved by is, this article is about four women from Afghanistan who are refugees. And, you know, you think about these big problems in the world, and it's hard to see what you can do to really make an impact. It seems overwhelming. And then to have four women walk through your door and know that you can help make their life better, that, that's a gift to be able to, to do that for people, so.
I can reshare for the board, I think board members seem to copy, but I won't share right now.
Yeah. It was, it was great. So, 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 you know, so one of the things I want to share with you is that, kind of how you started, is that how can we make our robust adult basic ed programming more, more well-known in our community? Because I'm, I'm really glad the four Afghani women found a pathway to your door. But are there others that we could do? When I knew you were coming, I went to our website so I could just read up on other things. I also went to your open house too and picked up some pamphlets and some information. But I talked to Adele this morning, because it's not an easy place to find our adult basic ed website. It's, it's not listed on our homepage, so there's no link to it. I found it by the search bar, but I, I don't know, and again, if, if Adult Learning Center was also kind of like ALC, Alternative Learning Center, then I, you know, yeah, there was this kind of probably misperception. And I just, I just want our community to, and it's, it's not just visibility on our website, it's like, are we showcasing this opportunity at career fairs or at Construct Tomorrow, which I think is coming up in a couple of weeks? Are there opportunities for ISD 709 to have tables, booths, handouts? And maybe, you know, feature some of the lesser-known opportunities that our district provides for? So that, that's our challenge. That's our challenge because having you there and having your staff and your leadership. And again, then on our, on your website is your staff. And I get to see who they are and what they teach and how they serve our community. And, 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 yeah, I just think it's.
And Chair Lowfald, I agree with you. Angie came in at a, at a difficult time, early retirement, in the middle of the school year, a transition, a moving out.
Out of a building, yeah.
A halt occurred.
That's true.
But she has hit the ground running. And just like you said, she has taken the opportunity to do some rebranding, right? Because she recognized right away that the connection between ALC being in the same building was problematic and has done a great job of trying to rebrand, you know, creating the website and, you know, providing those opportunities. So I'm really pleased, and I think everyone is, with the work that she's done so far. Again, we started off with some of our youngest learner opportunities to now here with some of our more mature learners and our students, as well as adults who are receiving services from our district. And so, you know, there are a lot of things we should be proud of in our district. And we have to find ways to celebrate and communicate all the good things that we have going on in our district. So I want to thank you for all your work. And it hasn't been easy. And one thing I do want to share, she's also joined our Teacher Learning and Equity Weekly Meeting. And, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, we're trying to make sure that she sees herself as connected to the district and also has an opportunity to understand and, and hear some of the programming and things that all of our departments are working on. So she can, you know, have some idea about how that could inform the work that she does. And, and we're, and we're growing in that because, you know, it's a lot of conversations that are not connected to adult learners, but I think it's beneficial for her to be there and to be connected. So again, thank you for everything you've done so far. And I'm sure you're going to do a lot more great things for us.
You ride the Duluth City Buses. Everyone has our ad in it now, as of this week.
Everyone has what?
An ad.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Oh, yay.
As of this week. So we're, we're working on getting that word out.
Well, thank you so much. That's so fun to hear that you're doing that. And I, I agree with Assistant Superintendent Bonds that transition and change, but also there's some energy. But I, but I loved working with Patty Fleech. And I can remember when we were in the process of selecting our new superintendent. And I really, we really didn't reach out to your department to have a representative maybe sitting on a, on one of the stakeholder committees. And I apologize, that was, you know, something that I, I really didn't have an understanding of really where, where you were in our district. So I'm really glad you're sitting in those meetings. I think that's really important. And I think it's really important for us to keep our adult basic ed kind of in our, our vision as well as we go forward, especially in advisory groups or in stakeholder groups to invite you to the table. Because we want to include all of our learners, as early as our earliest ones at three and four, to our adults that genuinely, you know, we're, we are all lifelong learners. So, great. That's exciting.
Member Lachlan Kemp?
Yeah, I was just going to add one other thing. Thank you, Chair Lowfald, for kind of thinking about how we all as board members can help promote the adult education. And I know when I was at the open house, I took a whole bunch of those postcards. And I've been handing them out, I carry them with me. And so that might be one, just little thing each of us as individuals can do. I know we all attend a lot of different meetings and have different, different communities out there that we can maybe help promote the adult ed to. And I, so, so I'm still handing them out, Angie.
Thank you.
I have them in my, my book with me, so, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Come back again.
Well.
Yeah, or we'll stop down to visit you.
Yeah, I wanted to update about the technology.
Yeah, yeah.
Our last presentation for tonight is going to be provided by our very own superintendent. It's related to our strategic planning update.
And thank you for that. I just wanted to provide the board a little brief update on where we've been. I know that as we're working with the community, sometimes there are questions that come up. And I just want to make sure that you're well-supported with any, any questions that you might have, or as well as maybe dispelling some things as to what strategic planning is not, right? Sometimes it's what it is, sometimes it's what it's not. If you want to flip to the next slide. Part of what we, and we've talked about this at the workshop, so I'm not going to go into great depth, but kind of talked about the difference between governance of the school board and management by the administration of the organization, how those are, are different. But then there's a whole other area of public, parents, staff, you know, the, the program staff and, and others who, who also have opportunity to give input. And the reason why I put this slide up is because really the, this is, in some ways, it's a backwards-designed strategic planning process. A lot of times, the school board says, this is what we want the schools to do. And the, the administration goes out and says, this is what we're going to do and this is how we're going to do it. And there isn't the same opportunity to first listen to the stakeholders to get the input so that management governance can, can really make the right choices as to what to do. So if you want to flip to the next. And you've seen this as well, quite a few times, that there's that first stage of the process, it really is, it's by design, somewhat intended to focus first on the student input, the staff input, and parent input, and some community member input, but largely those three entities, because those are the three main stakeholders in the work we do. So I know sometimes people might be thinking like, oh, like I, I want to be involved in the process. And I find myself too, because as superintendent, I try and stay back a little bit because we don't want to, we don't want to adversely influence the input process. If I go into a, a group of elementary folks and, and I'm, I'm in the meeting. If I go into a, a group of elementary folks and, and I'm, I'm in the meeting where they're giving input and I start saying, oh, we need more phonemic awareness in, in our literacy programs, that can sometimes shift the, the, the input that's, that's there. So really it's about gaining the input and then the board is heavily involved. So it's, it's about taking the input first and then, and then having that, that, those opportunities for the input. Where we're at now is focusing on a story wall and we'll talk about that a little bit more, as well as our environmental scan and looking at different strengths and challenges of our departments. Then we will be drafting what's called a desired daily experience and we'll be putting, we'll basically be putting together what is it that we need to do to reach that vision? So if a daily experience is, that workers want to feel like they're part of a thriving workforce where they understand their jobs and they're cared about and that they feel well-informed and knowledgeable and that they're also, that we're inclusive and we're trying, we're recruiting inclusive workforce. If that's the, the daily experience that is desired, then it's, it's up to us then to think about what actions do we need to take and what strategies do we need to put in place through our work to make sure that happens? So that's really that phase. But then as we've talked about too, there's, with the strategic plan, there's that three year operational plan that puts those plans into place. There are separate school improvement plans because each individual school might have different needs and different desires and abilities. And even thinking about, we have two program presentations tonight. I'm sure that the adult education plans for what you would like to improve on are going to be a little bit different than the early childhood plans, right? It makes sense because you're serving different populations and you have different needs. But then we've also talked about a, a board agenda and board plan and I'll talk, talk about that a little bit more in just a second. So this is kind of a recap of our, our workshop that we did, but it kind of explains the context of why the strategic planning is happening the way it is. Could flip to the next one. So we've been having those engagement sessions with the public, with parents, with staff. In fact, there are a couple of virtual ones going on tonight that are, that are taking place that, that basically it's an opportunity for people to give feedback. Part of me, some of the sessions were really, really well-attended and some of them were not extremely well-attended. And I was, I was a little worried like, oh, what if, what if some of the sessions aren't quite as well-attended? Are we getting all the feedback we need? This is really intended to get enough feedback to, to write the draft of what the, the daily experience is and then put it out for more feedback through survey process, through talking with the board, through talking with more. So it's really kind of like, what's our first stab at what that daily experience, what we want it to be for students, for staff, for families? Those are, that's why we're doing these info sessions. Then, this past Thursday, we had a great session on, uh, next, next slide, sorry. The, the next section was on our story wall. And this took place at Lincoln Park Middle School and we had probably close to 60 people there. Part, part of it was our planning team and the list of planning team members is on our website. But then we, we tried to invite other, a broad range of, of community members. I think we were pretty successful. We had army unit representatives, we had representatives from, you know, the NAACP, we had people from, who were looking at things from more of a fiscally conservative tax perspective, really tried to get a broad range of people there to talk about where have we been throughout the different decades? And we divided up into different groups and we kind of defined what were some of the big, the big events, what were some of the challenges and how did that maybe affect the culture and what we're doing? So by the end of the night, we had like a story of what has occurred in the district for the past 30 years. And I think for those people that were there, it was really very informative because you, you got a much deeper sense of why we are where we are and how we, how we got here. And, and I think sometimes it's, you can't, even if you have a vision of where you want to go, unless you really know what your current reality is, you can't really make progress towards that, that vision. So, so that is something that will be shared back with the board as soon as it's, it's, it's finished. And as I'm going through this, on the last slide, I should have pointed this out, there were some people that came to the community engagement sessions and they were kind of thinking that this was the reboot of the boundaries work. You know, they, they came to me like, you know, we want to make sure this boundaries, boundaries work is done right this time.
Yeah.
And we tried to clarify that that, that wasn't really the intent of what, what this is. Is, is there a pretty good possibility that we're going to need to do some things related to boundaries based on what we see from the strategic planning? I, I believe there is partly because of the, the high-class sizes on the east side, probably related to equity issues, but this is, that, that isn't a strategic plan. That might be some component of our strategic plan as we move forward. So again, that's, that's something that strategic planning is not, or at least our strategic planning is not an opportunity. That, then the next slide is, this, this Thursday, there's another three-hour session and really it's, it's looking again at, at our current reality, looking at our different systems, looking at data and really considering where we are at this point. So there's the historical, but then there's more of the, the database environmental scan.
So tell me what environmental scan, because my mind goes to like, what, we're, we're looking at trees and soil? What are we doing? What's an environmental scan?
That's a great question and I look forward to providing a deeper answer on Thursday. No, but I.
Oh, okay.
My, my, my understanding of it is, you know, what is our current learning environment for our students? What is our current work environment for our staff? And then what is our, our current environment for our families as we engage them? But also I think a big part of it is, you know, where, where are we at academically? Where are we at social emotionally? Where are we at with?
Safe and welcoming.
Safe and welcoming environments. So just kind of.
The environment, I get it.
So last Thursday was where have we been and how did we get here? And this session is more where are we at now? What is our current reality? Then, uh, there's going to be an opportunity where we're going to be putting together a draft of that daily experience, the desired daily experiences, and then we'll be sharing those with the board, the drafts for, for additional input from the board so that we can take our next steps there. After that, there's kind of a pause over the summer. There isn't as much going on. Usually we found that both staff and parents and families are, are less engaged in the summer as far as wanting to do additional things then. But I do think it's a good time for us to work together, board and the administration on, on workshop possibilities and I'll talk about that in just a moment too. Next slide. So, and here we go. Like here's, here's kind of what we talked about. We talked about putting together a, um, three-year work plan. And in our last meeting, in our policy meeting, we talked about the, uh, some of the suggestions we had that were in the, the, I shared the report from our workshop. There were some policy recommendations, particularly working with the 200 series, the 2000 series and the 8000 series. So we're going to start revisiting that as part of what we said we wanted to do. But then we also talked about, we had a good start, but we wanted to keep the momentum going. So we talked about trying to put together another board retreat in the, in the month of June so we can keep that work going related to putting together a board plan. And I'll, I'll share an example of the board plan in just a second. But I want to touch base on superintendent evaluation because, you know, you, you are my supervisor and it's my job to enact our strategic plan. And my evaluation should be based largely on what we do with our, our intentions and our strategic plan rather than, you know, random sentiments. It's about what can we get done, right? And I wa, I expect, I expect and I want to be held accountable for making sure that we're making progress as a school district. So we have a closed session coming up on the 17th and I've talked to members Kirby and member Oswald related to some of the work we did this last summer on the goals and making sure that the goals are clearly articulated so that we, when we go in with that evaluation tool on the 17th, we'll be able to reflect on where we've, where we've made progress on those goals. And I will also put together like a self-evaluation or self-reflection for that as well. Go to the next slide? And I don't think that might have had a duplicate, but.
Yeah, I thought you wanted two evaluations.
Yes, I want two evaluations. One for last year and one for this. No, just kidding. But as long as it did. And this, actually I bulleted this out, so I'm, I'm getting the one I reshared with you. But basically this is the MSBA definition of, you know, why, why do boards evaluate the superintendent? And what is that all about? And basically it's to keep, keep pulse on how, how are things going? To make sure that there's trust and transparency about what we're doing or not doing and that there's, there's really that opportunity for, to be assured that the priorities that the board and community have are addressed through me. So as you represent the population and you do that through governance, you put me in place to make sure that your, your will is executed, so your, your collective will of the community is executed through the administration. And really a lot of what you then would be holding me accountable for is how well are we doing that or not doing that? So that's really the, the MSBA model that's directly lifted from, from, they have a, a guide to superintendent evaluation. If you go to the next slide, when we talked about a three-year board work plan, this is an example of, and this was something that we shared, when we shared at the retreat, we said we'd take a look at it, kind of think about like, what would we want our work plan to look like over the next three years? You know, what is it that we hope to do with policy? What is it that we want to do to break out, you know, what we do with operations and governance? Is there work we need to do with the superintendent relationship? You know, evaluation is part of it, but are there other things that we want to make sure that we're putting in place? I have been wanting to set up individual meetings with each of the board members to kind of talk about, you know, where, where have we been for the past couple of years or months, or months and for, for newer board members and where do you want to go? What do you, how can I best serve you? So those are things that we, we want to put together as we look at our June retreat. I think that's it for that slide. So that's, that's kind of, it's a little more than just strategic planning, but because they all really interface together, right? There's strategic planning is the, the plan behind everything that we're, we're going to be all trying to execute together, but without proper superintendent evaluation, without a board plan for how we're supporting and working on, on the governance pieces as well as that strategic plan. That's, that's really the, the trifecta of things that we need to work on. Any questions? All right.
Hold on. A, a good teacher always waits and gives a little bit more time for questions.
True.
So, you know, I think that we just have to kind of digest it a little bit, I know, and see if there are any questions, but let's not shut down too quickly. Because I know, because strategic planning, we have talked about it since I was on the board four years ago and we just, you know, we, we transitioned to a new superintendent and then COVID hit, so we haven't really had a time. And I'm, I'm probably very much like many of our other board members, you know, this is a different way of looking at it, you know, as far as, you know, classroom to boardroom. And I'm delighted that we are out, you know, getting and listening to parents and teachers and staff. That, that just is what I would think. I have heard from a lot of my colleagues that they, they oftentimes think that we make decisions and then, you know, we're not listening to them or we didn't ask for their input. But that being said, it still seems odd to me that, and I worry that the, that the stakeholders and these, the meetings that are happening, they're wondering where we are. And, you know, isn't that a big part of our role is to be there to listen to them? Like, are they, you know, but I'm, I'm, I mean, we have all worked with Ray Queener now for over a year and I've done a lot of research and talked to other colleagues about TeamWorks and, and we know that we're working with really good, and you've been working as a leadership team for a whole year and a half as well. So I think we're, we're there, just, I just want to make sure that, I'm, I'm, I hope I'm voicing what some of you are thinking or, or have talked with the superintendent about before, but I know two members either not, you know, you, you really wanted to be a good strategic planner. I think you've got a lot of that in your background. And I know when we were at the workshop last summer and TeamWorks presented to us, I thought you asked good questions and had really good understanding of where we're going.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I've heard some feedback from the community about the listening sessions and especially the one, the history and that book and like how cathartic it was and then how it makes clear to everybody the pieces of history that we're bringing along. So I've heard, I mean, I, yeah, I've heard good things.
Okay. Anybody else?
Member Lachlan Camp?
Yeah, I, thank you Chair Lowfoud for summarizing. I think you're right, some of the different, uh, thoughts that some of us as board members have, but I, I'm really, I've been hearing good things about the process too. And I think back again on our retreat that we had on April 7th that, you know, that a big piece of that retreat also was us really reflecting on our role as governance, um, governance leaders as school board members. And I think that, um, this style of strategic planning certainly fits in when we, when we really reflect on what our role is as governance leaders in the district as well. We're not the ones that need to be asking our staff, for example, um, you know, how to do things. We can hear from them, but, or the community and certainly those of us who have door-knocked in our campaigns, we, we, we hear from the community. But our role, it makes sense as governance board members that we're not, you know, sitting at the table actively listening, um, with this style of strategic planning. And I think, you know, I certainly have thought a lot about that retreat and, and kind of what it means to be the governance board member versus, um, and that is the role that NSBA talks about a lot too in our training is Minnesota School Board Association is kind of that, that governance role, which I would welcome Superintendent Magus having that, that June retreat so we can kind of follow up on that retreat we had on April 7th and continue to explore and gain some skills in being stronger governance board members.
I just, I just wanted to add, I appreciate, I've heard really good feedback about the process as well as far as getting parents and community feedback. And I appreciate that there's been a lot of opportunities for that and probably will be more as well, just to make sure that everyone's voice has a, everyone has the opportunity to participate in that who wants to.
Thank you. And there is survey opportunity in addition and good opportunity that takes place in the fall too. So I think that's where, like, we know it's going to be like a, an ongoing process of developing those, those, those bases. And I appreciate the comments of, of the group as well as the feedback on how things are, are being perceived. And I'd also say that I have to give a shout out to not only Ray and the TeamWorks team, but, but the administrative and executive assistant teams behind the scenes that have done a lot of initial work in helping prepare for meetings, helping to make sure things are coordinated, helping to make sure that things are communicated and, and very grateful to a, a broad team support there.
Any other questions?
Okay.
See you now. That concludes our agenda right there.